Don't let it out.
Be worried about you doing that.
All right, welcome back to Board of Supervisors meeting for March 10th, 2015. And we are going to go straight back to Agenda Item Number Eight. Administrative Office received information regarding the potential releases of water from Lake Tolic and the possible adoption of a resolution in support of the efforts of local agencies, special districts, and government officials relating to this issue. And we have -- staff has been kind enough to rework the resolution. We'd like to share that with you, and I think Debbie, if you'd like to do that, please.
Sure, thank you. This is the proposed changes to the Lake Tolic Resolution. Resolution supporting the work of local agencies, special districts, and federal and state representatives regarding the potential significant water releases from Lake Tolic and New Maloney's in dry and/or drought years. Whereas Lake Tolic, built in 1957 to store water for irrigation, is operated by the Tri Dam Project and owned by Oakdale Irrigation District and South San Joaquin Irrigation District. In 1978, the Maloney's Dam was replaced with a new Maloney's Dam as a result of the Flood Control Act of 1962. The purpose of the reservoirs is to provide for irrigation, power, wildlife, and fishery enhancement, recreation, and water quality. Whereas the Board of Supervisors recognizes a flaw in state and federal mandates and policies regarding the release of water for fish flows and Endangered Species Act mandates. And whereas the Board supports the efforts of our state and federal representatives requesting the postponement of the release of water for fish flows and EPA mandates during dry and/or drought years. And whereas the Board emphasizes that the priority for water shall be for domestic water use and agricultural irrigation during dry and/or drought years. And whereas the citizens and local agencies of Calaveras County have made significant efforts to prioritize water conservation inefficiencies to preserve water resources within the county. And whereas the Board encourages the support for water conservation and watershed management from the State of California, local agencies, and all citizens to support the domestic and agricultural water needs of our region. And whereas the Board recognizes the vital role Lake Tolic and New Maloney's Lake have on the viability of the economy in our region, as tourism and agricultural are our main industries. And whereas the drawdown of Lake Tolic to its lowest levels will create a significant, long-reaching impact and financial hardship on local water districts, businesses, the community of Copperopolis, the County of Calaveras, and the region as a whole. Now therefore, be resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, supports those agencies, special districts, and state and federal representatives in their efforts to manage potential water releases from Lake Tolic and New Maloney's Lake. Be it further resolved that the Board urges state and federal representatives to reduce or suspend all state and federal mandates requiring the release of water during dry and/or drought years. Be it finally resolved that the Board encourages state and federal representatives to review and amend all mandates and policies for the release of water for fish flows and ESA mandates during dry and/or drought years.
Okay. So, do I have any public comments on this?
Can those ladies leave early because they give off their lunch?
We have our lunch. Really?
Excellent.
Thank you. That's what I was going to say too, Axlon. I really appreciate the effort here that the Board has put on to get this done today. And that it is one of those things that's very rare, Debbie had mentioned about the cooperation between agencies that seems to be in the forefront right now. And I'm really, really, really happy that we are able to do that and gather around a common goal and a common purpose to help the citizens of this county. So, thank you for your efforts. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
House Taxpayer Association, I'd like to diddle with those comments. The two main things are the tremendous working together of the different agencies, and then the firm request that the federal government stop this straining of our reservoirs for non-important purposes. Thank you.
Vicki Reinkie, Calaveras County Republicans, I too just want to say thanks. This is a great resolution. I think it says what we need to say, and hopefully it should make an impact on our state and federal government. So, we're behind you. So, thanks.
Any other public comments? Comments from the Board?
Actually, there is one typo in here. It should -- on the third, whereas it should say ESA instead of EPA.
Yeah, EPA probably wouldn't go.
No, I don't think so.
Mr. Chair, without correction, I'd like to make a motion to support the work on this Lake Tolic Resolution as being -- as presented.
Okay. I second that motion.
All right, so we have a nomination by -- is that right?
Mercy.
A motion -- sorry. A motion by Supervisor Ponte to adopt a resolution for -- to supporting the work of local agencies, special districts, and federal and state representatives regarding the potential significant water releases from Lake Tolic and New Maloney's in dry and/or drought years. As read with the typo error fixed, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go to Item Number 10 on regular agenda. Planning: Adopt the negative declaration and approve an ordinance amending section 17.04.200, density bonus.
Good afternoon.
There you go, Peter.
Peter Mauer, Planning Director. This is an ordinance amendment that was directed from our 2010 housing element. It's also mandated state law that we upgrade -- update our zoning ordinance to be consistent with the density bonus requirements of state law. Our current ordinance was adopted in 1986, revised a year after that, and to my knowledge, there has been no -- no one taken any benefit of that ordinance since it was adopted. But the state requires that we update it to meet current standards of state law, and that is attached in your packet if anyone's interested in reading what that says. Essentially, the current provisions of the code allow for a 25% bonus if you meet certain housing requirements. And to get that bonus, applicant would need to apply for conditional use permit with approval by the Planning Commission. Under state law, there's now a much more complex formula for calculating the amount of bonus units that would be provided for different types of affordability, and we cannot mandate that they go through a separate discretionary permit process just for the purpose of applying the density bonus to by right type of action. So, what we've done is essentially incorporated the state law by reference as opposed to rewriting the whole thing in our own code, because it may or may not change sometime in the future, and then we have to go back and amend it again. So, because it's fairly complex, it's fairly lengthy, it doesn't make sense to just reiterate everything in our county code. And, you know, the only benefit to do that were someone to come in and want to look at our code, see what would be allowed, and they could look in our code to see what the density bonus requirements are. Instead, we refer them to state law. But every agency that I'm aware of that takes a benefit or any builder that benefit from density bonuses is very familiar with the state law already. They know where to look for that stuff. So, I don't think it's going to cause a problem for someone who wants to take advantage of the density bonus and not have it readily available in our code. They know where to look for it. So, there's some other provisions in the state law that also provide bonuses for childcare facilities as well as other incentives such as reduction in parking and other development standards that we also have to comply with. So, that is also incorporated into our code. We prepared a negative declaration for this ordinance. There were some comments from Caltrans regarding the concern about potential increase in traffic from additional units and the potential traffic impacts as well as air quality impacts. We did some further analysis, and there was a response to that comment attached to the negative declaration that demonstrates that the potential impact is really less insignificant and is not an issue. And we have not heard anything subsequently from Caltrans on that issue. So, I think we've resolved that. With that, I would recommend that you adopt the negative declaration or approve the negative declaration and adopt the ordinance. If there are any questions, I'll happily answer them.
Go ahead, Debbie.
Can you clarify, did this go through the Planning Commission?
Yes, it did.
All right.
And they recommended approval five zero.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Any other questions here from the Board? Any other public comments, please?
House of the California, Calaveras Taxpayer Association, one of the things that we're concerned about is we understand that this element has been previously approved, and the item before you now is to change one part of it, not anything to do with the rest of it. Is that correct? So, our concern is that we think that the -- that this element will be coming up for review soon, and we would like to make comments on that from the perspective of private property rights. But those comments would not be appropriate for this item.
This is not an amendment to the housing element. This is an implementing ordinance that we said we would do the last time we adopted the housing element in 2010. But this is an ordinance amendment, not an amendment to the housing element itself. It is true that the housing element will be coming up soon. In fact, we just posted it two days ago on our website, and it's available for public review now. I sent out a message earlier this morning to interested parties, and so that's available for review. It'll be reviewed before the Planning Commission and the Board. But what was before us today is an ordinance, a zoning ordinance amendment, to implement just the density bonus provisions from the 2010 housing element.
Thank you very much. The taxpayers have no problem with this, and also for the information on being able to comment on the housing element.
Any other public comments?
I noticed there's a number of issues here that slight or low -- and I'm sure you all read this, right? Slight or very low consequences. But there's a number of things that says it's, well, minor. I just wonder is when it comes to make commitments for some of these entities, independently elected, not appointed ones, okay? Because you guys can pull strings. But like water and other basic services, I'd like to know who has the expertise to tell -- I mean, I'm not taking anything from the gentleman, okay? I'm sure he's an expert and a very good expert. But, okay, for instance, what page is this? On page package 116, and you go up there, fire protection, police protection, schools, parks, other public facilities. Well, my question is, who's the authority to say, "Oh, I just don't know"? You might think that, "Oh, no big deal on the cops, no big deal on the schools, no big deal on the parks, and other public facilities." Is that minor detail that no big significant answer? These are some major issues that you are tangling with right now. Increasing the use of existing neighborhood and regional parks, other -- hey, less than significant. We're talking about your kids, okay? I mean, I know to some of you it's bigger issue than others. But I believe that our fire districts are not exactly -- are they ready to go into two-, three-story high buildings? I notice you're going to get benefits. Is that another word for a grant? Also, that when you go in there and you sell -- somebody buys this low-income homes with a good benefit. Did you notice that if they sell it for a profit two years after that, they have to split the profit back with the state? How many people are going to invest in some low-income housing to knowing that if it's causing up in value, they have to split it with the government back? Or maybe my interpretation is wrong. But think about it. I got no argument with the gentleman for all the things below it. But this is almost at the end of the -- these issues. Utility service system, minor problems? How are you going to provide water? Who's going to pay for the new sewer pipes, increasing facilities, landfill? I'm leaving. Take a look at the little minor details for the benefits.
You don't have to leave. You just got to, you know, sit down. That's all.
I need to exercise. A lot of people tell me where to go, so I need to exercise.
Hello, I'm Tanya Dawson from Valley Springs. And to me, it looks like these density bonuses are just more social engineering imposed by the state and top-down government. And I would really like to see the supervisors tell the state to go pound sand. I know you guys probably aren't in a position to do that yet, but I really look forward to the day when we can just tell the state to go pound sand. Thank you.
If drought keeps going, we'll be pounding sand. Any other public comments? Okay. Any more comments from the Board? Make a motion to approve. So Supervisor Wright makes a motion to approve. Supervisor Olivera seconds the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
All right. Item Number 11, Health and Human Services Agency, conduct a public hearing to solicit community input on -- oh, we got to open up for a public meeting, a public hearing meeting, huh? Second time. No? No?
Can we look at the board again just a moment?
Okay. Getting my instructions.
When you would take public comment, you would clearly identify on the record that the public hearing is open, and then at the end of a public comment, close the public meeting.
All right, so Item Number 11 is Health and Human Services Agency, conduct a public hearing to solicit community input on a supplemental community development block grant, CDVG, project to be submitted to the State of California Housing and Community Development for senior medical services, transportation in the amount of $250,000 utilizing the CDVG program income reuse funds, and to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Health and Human Services to submit to HCD the request for this supplemental project. Thank you. Mary?
Good afternoon, Mary Suicki, Director of Health and Human Services. I'm going to give you a quick Cliff Notes of what we're going to be requesting of you. I do have Terry Cox here, who is our consultant for the Community Development Block Grant, to answer any specific questions, as well as we have Common Grounds here who can also specifically answer any questions about the specific project. Back in July of 2015, Home and Community Services notified all of the counties in the state that there were a number of federal changes. One of the changes is that program income rules changed, and that is any program income that any county had had to first be spent before -- at least 50% of it before any county could apply for any Community Development Block Grant, in addition to only being able to apply for once every two years. So, what that means is we have to spend any money that we previously had set aside in program income to -- before we can apply. So, normally, we would be applying in the year coming up. We're not going to be able to do that until we expend funds that we had in program income. So, we had asked you back in September to have a public hearing to get some ideas about how we might be able to utilize some program income for the Community Development Block Grant. And we received three submissions. We received one from the Volunteer Center for a community center in Santa Andreas. We've received a second one for housing by Habitat for Humanity. And the third one we received for was senior medical transportations for senior citizens to get them to doctor's appointments, et cetera. Now, the money needs to be utilized within our existing grant two-year cycle, and so that's part of our constraints. We're recommending to you, after we reviewed all of the applications, the senior medical transportation program.
Excuse me, Mary?
Yes.
Is that for senior medical transportation or veterans and the senior?
It would be for low-income seniors, of which many of ours, as you know, veterans would be eligible for that, yes. Because most of the preponderance of our veterans are Korean and Vietnam veterans. Yeah. So, that would help get them to many of the appointments we've been having discussions about. So, that is what we are asking from you today. This would pay for one four-passenger van that has a lift and a second van that is an eight-passenger van with a lift. This would cover the insurance, the cost of a dispatcher and a scheduler. It would cover the gas, the maintenance, et cetera, for all of two years. Okay? That's the Cliff Notes. Okay? Any questions? If you want the real specific, the experts are behind me, but I just wanted to be able to give you the Cliff Notes.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Not yet. Not yet. Not yet. Oh, not yet? All right. Sorry. Because to go to public comments, I have to open it up to a public hearing. And I haven't done that yet.
A couple of questions before the public hearing.
Go ahead.
Mary, can you define what the age of the senior is? Where does it start? 50, 55, 60, 62?
For a senior low-income?
Normally, according to --
CDVG, it's 62, I believe.
Did it? It's 60 now? Okay, thank you. They keep changing on me.
Almost there.
And then after two years, if this grant is awarded, then the vehicles stay?
Yes, the vehicle stays.
They stay? All right, so nothing's returned, or?
No.
Okay.
No, we don't know. This is a grant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the Board? If not, I'd like to open it up, open a public hearing. And in a public hearing, we can hear from the public, and you will have five minutes.
Oh, wow.
Five.
You just have to write down their name.
Yes. Please write down your name.
Okay. Bill McMathus, Hanford Hill. I just had a quick question from -- I don't know if it's what I heard or what I thought I heard, and that was regarding veterans. Are veterans included as a group just because they're veterans? Or are they coincidentally included because they're low-income? There's -- I don't know exactly what that was. I don't want to ask questions out here, but it seemed unclear to me that are people coincidentally included by their status based on income?
It would be because they were senior citizens.
As of 60 years old, right?
Yes. Because they're 60 years old.
I had a couple of questions. Is the $250,000, is that the total amount of the CDVG monies available?
Yes.
Okay. Is this the -- we spoke of CDVG money last year, and I know I spoke up and I said, you know, "Well, what about an alternative list of care providers?" And I think you were going to talk with me about CDVG, surely, when I -- when this was presented, and that didn't happen. So, I'm wondering that my idea didn't even qualify. It would have been a CSBG idea, rather.
Yeah, it wouldn't have qualified under CDVG, probably.
Okay, and then, let me see, the second thing is -- oh, the transportation. This is to buy a couple of vans included in this, is what I'm understanding. And then I would also like to say that we're still mulling around the carpool idea for having vehicles available to all the counties, and knowing that the IHSS Advisory Committee has access to a van that is -- we've only used 10 times in the past 10 years. That could be possibly used -- I wasn't on the committee last time, but I suggested that when the probation department was looking for a van, that might have been an option for them. Once again, I'm saying there's a van that doesn't really get that much of our use sitting over there in the parking lot at the welfare department, so to consider that also.
I'm glad somebody's doing it. Got my support. I'm not very happy about 10 grand coming in from someplace else. You got a quarter of a million dollar coming here, okay? We're talking about a grand. But how often the transportation, how many days is it going to be available? And if you're going to buy another vehicle, that's wonderful, but I believe Public Works getting rid of a couple of vehicles. I don't know what they're going to do with it, but I'm much rather see Public Works, they're replacing it, transferring it to these good folks, and use the money for the benefit of the patient, your customers, your clients. I don't see any details on it. I don't really see the detail breakdown where the $250,000 is going to go to, other than you're going to put a limited senior people, transfer them to medical needs. How often, when, when it's available? How many people they're going to expect? I mean, they must have some kind of track record. How many vehicles they own now? I mean, that place looks like a car lot sometime. Where is the big money going to go to? Because they do have vehicles. And you, as a Board of Supervisors, there's some other staff that have a few vehicles also that they're getting rid of called Public Works. Is that going to be just for the vehicles? How often they're going to be used? What's going to be costing the maintenance? What is it going to cost in personnel? How much is it going to be used for? How's the, what's the breakdown of the quarter of a million dollars, other than good intentions? Thank you. Is the bus transportation going to be any hours, anytime? You got, I believe there's something about a dispatcher, one day a week. So how often are you going to use the damn bus if the dispatcher's only one? One day a week? Maybe you, intention, I'm not questioning the intention, but I would like to see the details. I would like to see the details. Because the grant is still, maybe it doesn't affect you county, but the grant is affecting a few people in the, who's paying for it. Thank you.
George Frye, I would like to start out with the number 7,000. That number is the number of veterans in this county. Of those 7,000, 5,000 are over the age of 60, and are Vietnam vets, that need transportation to go to Sacramento, to Palo Alto, or over to Livermore. I'm happy to hear that we have the opportunity to get two vans that people, that are, for people that are disabled. It's been many years that Vietnam vets have ignored the VA. And it's only because, like myself, we're in our late 60s, and our bodies are breaking down. And so now, many of those Vietnam veterans are seeking help from the VA. So, I think it's really necessary. I don't think we need to be concerned with all the micromanaging of the dispatcher and the drivers, and all of that. And I think it's a well-worth program. For a few years, I've been driving veterans to Palo Alto, to Livermore, and so that they'd have a way to go. Many of these veterans, they've had to take a bus from Sonora, and they had to be there at 5:30 in the morning, ride all day. If they were only going to Livermore, that was fine. But the rest of them that were going to Palo Alto, they'd have to ride the bus all the way to Palo Alto, do what they needed to do there, and then get back on the bus, go to Livermore, pick up the rest, and come back. The folks that are living in Amador County, their transportation system is such that any veterans there could meet at Post 108, the American Legion Post, and they could take the Amador Transit that would take them to the airbase in Sacramento, Major Air Force Base, where there's a VA clinic. So, I strongly urge you to approve the funding for these two buses. Thank you.
Marty Crane, Valley Springs, and Director of the Volunteer Center. When this first came up, it was presented as transportation for our veterans, with a side note of seniors. And it's evolved into seniors, six-year older, and of course, many of them are veterans. Since 1991, Volunteer Center has been administering a volunteer safety net transportation program that we administer it, but the community makes it happen. They drive their own cars, and we reimburse for mileage. For $35,000 a year, the entire program could be run easily. So, it's a financially prudent way to do it. I have to say, I was excited about the idea of a van with a lift, because in the volunteer transportation program, most of the drivers, as I suspect most of them will be for this program, are seniors. And so the clients have to be able to get in and out of the car fairly easily on their own, with limited support. And so I was pretty excited to hear about a van for that, for those who maybe need a lift. But since 1991, we have never, never, not even once, had more than one person going to the doctor, or a veterans clinic, at the same time, ever, since 1991. And all the social agencies and the Veterans Services, they all know that the Volunteer Center's there. And when they call, I've been asked, so what percentage, how many veterans were you not able to serve? I go, it's a zero, because we have never said no. We always just figure out a way to make it happen. That's community. And so, I'm just really in, confused about the four-passenger van, and the eight-passenger van, and the $250,000, you know? I realize that this is an amount of money that we could put to good use around here, and I know that there's reasons why they selected this one over the Habitat, or whatever. The Volunteer Center Community Center was really a location for a neighborhood center, where the Volunteer Center would live and be able to then afford to continue with some sustainability on this transportation program. So, I just wanted to say that, one other thing. The people, since we have never had to say no, and they all know where to find us, and we drive to the VA clinics and out of county all the time, we probably have two to three volunteer drivers on the road, any given day of the year, on average. It's usually Monday through Friday, but two or three, if you average it out, every day of the year. And it's been that way for years. And so, there was one thing I wanted to share with you, and I, oh! So these, everybody knows where to find us, right? So if they're not calling, they're getting where they need to go. Now, Mr. Frye mentioned the difficulty with using transit. Well, you know, for some people, that transit trip might be a sense of independence. They can just do it on their own. For others, it's probably more of a challenge, in which case, I would hope they would call their support network, their family, their friends, their, their community, the Volunteer Center. And I worry that when we take away, when we say, "We'll, we'll drive you." Uncle Henry, you don't have to drive Cousin Esther. You don't have to drive her anymore. Or Esther, you don't have to drive Uncle Henry. You know, well, we're, we're, I worry that we run the risk of fracturing the family and the community involvement in this process. And veterans have told me before that they, oh God, we can't do that. And so, that's all I have to say. You know, where we go with this, we go with it. But I am just, I just want to make sure everybody knew that in, since 1991, not, not, not more than one person's ever, ever, needed to go to the doctor at the same time, same place. That's, that's all.
Kathy with, Kathy Tobel with Common Grounds. This is something I'm extremely passionate about. For 10 years, I have been working in these counties to try to get transportation for medical appointments. I feel very honored that we're really close to that. Our agency last month provided 30 transports for medical appointments. Five of those were wheelchair-bound. Common Grounds since 2000 has been providing transportation for seniors in Amador County. We're using our own vehicles from Amador to come over here if we have a wheelchair client. $250,000. I mean, you know, first of all, there, if I understand it right, there is no operating cost in this. This is equipment. We have, we truly believe that socialization is an extremely important part of our seniors that are stuck in their homes, lives. I don't know if you're aware of it, but we have close to 230 clients in Calaveras County who receive Meals on Wheels. These are homebound people that can't get out. They can't get the Volunteer Center, because they can't provide the necessary transportation because of their transport needs. We want to do things like get all these vets together, get their appointments. We've been working with the VA in Palo Alto. We've been working with the VA in Sonora. Working to get them to make their appointments on the same day, so that we can transport six, seven, eight of them at one time. It's more economical. It gives them socialization. It gets them in with other vets. Gosh, so many things I want to say. The senior centers, the mobile home parks, again, a lot of those single women that are there, that are stuck there, that never learned to drive, that lost their driver's license due to a medical reason, they're stuck in those places unless somebody takes them somewhere. We want to get them out on a monthly basis to a shopping trip. You put six, seven, eight of them from one mobile home park on a van, again, you're socializing them. This is not just about transportation. This is about taking care of our own people in our community that need it. Thank you very much.
Kathy? Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. See you none? I can bring it back to the board real quick, right? Bring it back to the board for comments. No comments? May I have the questions be answered, or then just? Okay.
First off, I'd like to say that the money would be, that we're recommending would go to Common Grounds. Has nothing to do with any of the vehicles in Health and Human Services, has nothing to do with the staff in Human, Health and Human Services. Got to be real clear about that. On the issue of veterans and switching it to senior citizens, it was recommended by the Home and Community Services Division at the state, that the broader category of senior citizen includes that, given our county, and that, that way we can utilize that, the transportation services in a larger vein. And we happen to agree with that premise. And that way, we can maximize the vans for multipurpose. We also have, are aware of, and have been, and had conversations with Common Grounds, that they are coordinating with the transit services, so that they take and will be picking up people who they've either not been served, or will help relieve some of those specialized trips that take away from the ongoing transit issues. The other thing I have to say realistically, is that, you know, in Health and Human Services, transporting clients to medical appointments, to other appointments, is the number-one issue that we have. We don't have enough transporters, especially in the area of the senior programs, either to the, to the clinics, you name it. So, just from having worked Health and Human Services for 10 years, I can tell you now, there isn't enough transportation to anything local, let alone to any of the specialists, which we don't happen to have just yet, although I know there's been work, trying to get some specialists here. So, you know, and that's the beauty of having some vans that are focused on getting people to that specialized transportation for the medical needs, for those specialists that might be taking them out of county for those needs, and bringing them back home. So that, especially like for the vets, you know, what, what Mr. Frye forgot to tell you, is that when they leave and they, they need to be down in Sonora by 5:30, they get home at 8 o'clock here. So if they also have to go to West Point, they're home by 9:00, or whatever time. That's a very long day if you're disabled, and especially if you're in poor health. So, you know, we're just trying to take care of our citizen to the best of our ability. And that's why the recommendation is there. You know, this is strictly money for the vans, and getting the, you know, the, the appointments made, et cetera. It has nothing to do with anything else but that.
Any questions? Mary? Could I address you for a moment, please?
I'm sorry.
In our board packet information, it says this money, these funding, will be used for the acquisition of vans, one four-passenger, one eight-passenger, fuel, maintenance, insurance, license, signage, marketing materials, advertising, computer, and scheduling software.
Yeah.
Common Ground would contribute $10,000. Cover staff costs, or dispatcher, and driver. So, these vans would be designated strictly for that point.
Right. They have to be.
Using the $250,000 funding.
Right. Right. And we do the audit.
It's a whole program, but that would be administered...
By Common Ground.
Common, Common.
Yeah, and then we just make sure that we do the audit.
And it would be used solely for the transportation of patients.
They have to.
For the restrictions of the grant.
Yeah. And we, and then we make sure that, and we do the audit. Okay?
Just, I'd like to clarify some things, as I'm reading more and more about grants. This specifically says it's for medical transportation. Specifically says for those 60 and older, and they're going to have to meet an income criteria to ride the van.
Low income, yeah.
Okay. So, not to get into the, you know, how are you going to determine who's low-income or not, when they call and need the bus? But Kathy mentions about the socialization aspect of getting a group to go somewhere. So does that jeopardize the grant at all, if it's, if they're not going to a medical appointment?
The, like, if, if you use the vans, let's say you don't have, you have an hour or two where you don't need them for a medical appointment, and you use it to take some people for a socialization, that's okay, as long as it's not the preponderance.
Okay. And then, will people have to pay to ride the van in addition to, because I'm, I'm...
For the Community Development Block Grant? No.
No.
It's an outright grant.
So it's a free service for at least the two years?
Yeah.
That we're, we have this grant?
Yes.
And this equipment? Okay. And then it says, oh, what was the other? I guess, you answered the other question, so. All right, thanks.
Okay. Other questions?
Any other questions?
No, I have one more.
Sure.
I have a problem with the fact that this grant is used for the transportation of medical appointments. And that's pretty specific.
Mm-hmm.
How do we get social trips offered?
If, let's say you have folks, let's say today is a day where there, you're picking up people around San Andreas, okay? Bringing them here. And you're, you have the driver waiting to pick people up, because you're, you're going to pick up and bring back a whole bunch of folks, let's say at 3:00. That's the way it's set up for the transportation back. In the interim, you can pick up a couple of folks and bring them someplace, to, let's say, a meal site, and get them back while you're waiting. You can do that. It, it doesn't mean that you're going to do a whole lot of other things. And then, you know, it just says, you, the preponderance of the day is being used for medical.
I don't see that in my document package. I'll have to take a look at that.
You have to, you have to think about medical in lots of different ways, too.
I'm sorry, what?
You have to look at medical also in a lot of different ways, too. You know, the, there's, there's a strong belief, too, that when, and if, I need to take you to take, talk to some of my senior citizens, and Debbie certainly knows this.
I'm one.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, there are some people, like, for example, one of our seniors came to visit me recently, and she was talking about how, when she went to, for example, one of the chronic pain management, and they talked to her, because she, she was pretty much like... much like bed bound, hanging out, just didn't feel like wanting to do things. And when she went to some of the classes and learned how to deal with her pain, she learned that part of that was that she had to get up out of bed and start doing things. And now today, she's very much of an advocate out doing things, okay? And part of that is also for her going out and doing things and going to the meal site, et cetera. So the question comes, is that her health? For, you know, you have to look at health in a lot of different ways. And that is part of what I think Kathy's point is. You have to look at health in more than one way. It isn't just a doctor and a pill and a surgery, et cetera. You have to look at, if you bring a whole bunch of folks, that normally would be, and we know this, that people can, depression can do all sorts of negative things to your body when you're just isolated, then, and, and it can cause you to have major health problems. You get people out of that, even for an hour or two a day, and you bring them to a place where all of a sudden they feel important again, and they feel like they have some social, and they start talking, and then their, their day brightens up. It changes their world around. And, and all of a sudden, maybe they don't need some of the things that they've needed. And their, their health gets better, they're mentally alert, et cetera. You've changed their world around in their health, and they may not need some of the things that happened before. They may not even need mental health kinds of things that, that happened. It changes a whole lot of things. And so do not think just along those small lines. A meal site can change a whole lot of things. So, you know, I'm just gonna be, remember, I'm also in behavioral health.
I agree with you, Mary, but...
But I, I think what happens in these grant programs, you're saying medical appointments, and that's what, you know, the narrow scoped mindset is going to look at. I don't know, you know, maybe Terry is...
Well, that's why I said we can work, work with the state, too.
Right. But if it's more, it's, you know, as I see it, it's gonna be more like Health and Wellness type appointments. I mean, you know, medical is so black and white for some people, they can't see the advantages of, you know, getting someone to a senior site for a meal, you know, health-wise, that's going to be good for them, wellness-wise, social, all of those dynamics, you know? So I can see, you know, the flexibility in the program as we're saying it, but when these grants, I've seen before, when you say medical, sometimes folks at that state level or who's ever administering the grants at a higher level, look at it as very black and white.
And I'd be, and I'd be willing if the board agrees, because the resolution talks about my negotiating with the state. Megan, that, the whole issue is that you allow me that opportunity to see if, if we can broaden that. Okay?
I would, I would agree with that.
All right.
And then I see the integration working with transit at some point when we start looking...
State.
Debbie, great. I agree with you.
If you can run a secondary use, is that what you're asking?
Yeah. To broaden the definition along what Supervisor Ponti was suggesting.
Can I make one more suggestion?
You can make as many as you want.
Yeah. To, to reconfirm what we're talking about, we've been running our restaurant for nine years, mostly a senior area. Those folks don't come in there just for food.
Yeah.
And, and so you can see, a lot of them come in, sometimes very withdrawn and sometimes angry. And you can tell where they're going. Good example, my mom. And now she, you know, she became part of, part of the whole situation down there. Socialization is huge for seniors. It helps them actually eat better. I, I watched, I watched people go from not taking care of themselves at all, not eating worth a darn, coming in like they are just waiting to lay down and die, to improve their whole life. I like to say it was our food, but I think it was the, the company they kept in the restaurant. And not just the restaurant, but, you know, a good place is a senior center. Senior Center is another great place for that. And I know many seniors that would be sitting in their homes, all alone, not doing anything, if they didn't have places like this to go to. That keeps them healthier longer. And so it's, I think it's a really great idea, when you say socialization on those vans, if, if you're sitting all by yourself in a car driving around, or if you have somebody driving a car with you, especially if you like them, it's a whole different trip. And so you get three or four of those veterans or seniors in that, in that van, taking them somewhere, it's a party, you know? It's way better than just waiting for the next bad thing to happen to you medically. So I agree with, with the whole socialization, medical interaction.
Well, I want to kind of stick up for Mary a little bit, too, because I had the pleasure of sitting with, with her while she opened herself up to questions from the veterans group. She doesn't have an easy task. If we had a separate Veterans Service Office where everything had its own budget and so forth, it would be easy. But her, her task is to serve the veterans, and it's mixed in with everything else she does. So it's not just simple for her to say, with a 12% veterans group in this county, this is just going to be used for veterans, because it's gonna be used for a mix. But she isn't, I guarantee she's including them in her thought better. I've, I've heard her say that. She cares deeply for it. And somewhere in the future, we've got to straighten that out a little bit for her. She, she is trying to also do something, I believe, that I heard discussed, and that is keep our veterans from going out of the county to get these services. And these vans could help that, and correct, and stop me anytime I'm wrong. These vans could keep our veterans somewhat in this county. Right now, maybe they're not asking for transportation because somehow they got a ride to Amador County, or somehow they got a ride to Tuolumne County, when maybe some of that could have, could have been had here for them. And this, this will, this will help that. Now, I, anytime you say grant, I've got a suspicious eye, so I'm already on board with that and the things that go along with it. But I, I would support her in this effort.
So, and, and knowing that, you know, Common Grounds is involved makes it even better because that's, that's what they do. They coordinate with seniors.
They're very good.
It's, it's just a, it's a good deal, so.
And I, I think there's room, too. I mean, the Volunteer Center was made mention. You know, my experience is that you have those who don't mind that kind of public transport, and then you like those who like a very individualized kind of custom ride. They don't want to ride with anybody else. They want to be in a car, they want to get to their appointment and back, and, you know, don't want to wait on a bus for two hours as others are, you know, shopping or, or medical appointments or whatever it might be. So, you know, hopefully as, if this grant is awarded, it can be a cohesive effort of, you know, what Common Grounds is hoping to do here with the Volunteer Center, with public transit, you know, a coordination of services is what I'm hoping for, to, to better serve our population. And it might be a combination of, of different resources for people, if there's some sharing of information and, and everyone's kind of thinking as they're developing their routes and such, that we're taking all that into consideration.
Yeah.
I do have a question here where it was anticipated that 100 lower income seniors will be served. Is that number based on a survey, or that seems low to me? I don't know if...
Okay.
I'm Terri Cox, Cox Consulting. Normally, on any of these CDBG descriptions, we do a low estimate.
Okay.
You know, it's great if you exceed it, if you don't meet it, you know, they want to know why. So this is kind of the low...
Bare minimum.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I was gonna make one suggestion, too. It, it would be an eligible thing for the county to do transportation of seniors for anything. I mean, it would be eligible within the Community Development Block Grant Program. What you put in your resolution, however, will tie how narrow or wide the specific thing that you're approved for is. So with that in mind, I would suggest that there be a slight alteration to the wording of the resolution in the set aside part where it says, "Senior Medical Transportation Services", I would add, "Senior Medical and Health Transportation Services." And that would open it up so that, you know, if people need to go to the pharmacy...